Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, July 20 Sioux Falls City Council Meeting. Thanks for joining us here tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please. Tom?
Council members Kylie?
Here.
Nitzer?
Here.
Selberg?
Here.
Sale?
Here.
Star?
Here.
Brecky?
Here.
Erickson?
Here.
Jensen?
Counselor Jensen is absent because he is with his newborn child. He just had a little baby boy 36 hours ago, George William. So, we gave him a hall pass tonight. So, he's with George William. So, we wish him and his wife and their other son the best with that. So, congrats, Alex. We'll move on with our invocation to give that tonight is Pastor Phil Tagg with Ransom Church. Pastor Phil, thanks for being back with us again. We'd ask you to rise for his invocation and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Let's pray. Father, I know the, I know the day that I had, and I know the weight that I carried into this room tonight just from the day that I had. And I think about the people sitting around this panel who carry the weight of being an elected official. They carry the weight of the day that they've had. They carry the weight of concern for this city and their love for this city and their desire to do the right thing. And they carry the weight of frankly, just being weary from life and from, from all that we face. And I just pray for the things they need for tonight. I pray for the courage to make the hard decisions, the wisdom to make good decisions, and, and just a heart to be fully present in this room as they make those decisions. Would you just anoint their time in this place and help them make the decisions that are going to be best for the future of our city? We pray this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you Pastor Phil for the invocation. We'll move on to item four, our consent agenda. Are there any changes to the consent agenda? If not, look for a motion.
Move approval.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on that? All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote on that, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We'll jump ahead then to item 29, which is our regular agenda. Look for a motion there, please.
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Motion by Erickson and seconded by Counselor Sale.
I'll make a motion to amend by placing item 56 before item 47 and item 57 after item 47.
Second.
All right. Motion by Counselor Erickson, seconded by Counselor Sale to rearrange those agenda items. Any discussion on that? All right. Let's vote on that amendment, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Back to the main motion as amended. Any other amendments here? All right. Any discussion? All right. We'll take a vote then on the main motion as amended.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Also, before we continue on, just want to review public input for our agenda items. For our regular agenda items, comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adoption, in which case public input is limited to five minutes. For all regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item being considered at that time only. And during general public input at the end of the meeting, comments are limited to no more than three minutes per person during that portion. So, with that being said, we'll move on to our next item.
Item 30, new 2021 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license and new 2021 retail wine insider license for Glacial Lakes Distillery, 200 South Main Avenue, CUP not required pending final inspections per Health and Building Services. Item 31, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license and new 2021 retail wine insider license for Riverview Barn Incorporated, 2400 South Riverview Avenue, CUP not required pending final inspections per Building Services. Item 32, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company, Deuces Casino 1, 1708 West Burnside Street with conditional use permit 013694-2021 being approved on February 3, 2021 pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item 33, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company, Deuces Casino 1, 1708 West Burnside Street pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item 34, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company, Deuces Casino 1.5, 1706 West Burnside Street with conditional use permit 13694-2021 being approved on February 3, 2021 pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item 35, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company, Deuces Casino 1.5, 1706 West Burnside Street pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item 36, new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company, Deuces Casino 1.75, 1704 West Burnside Street with conditional use permit 13694-2021 being approved on February 3, 2021 pending final inspections for Health and Building Services. Item 37, request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021-22 retail malt beverage South Dakota farm wine license for Commonwealth Gaming and Holdings Company, Deuces Casino 1.75, 1704 West Burnside Street. Item 38, special one-day malt beverage licenses for Panacea Brewing Company to be operated at 8th and Railroad Center Parking Lot, 401 East A Street for special events on July 10th and 31st, 2021. Item 39, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for the Zoological Society to be operated at the Great Plains Zoo and Delbridge Museum, 805 South Kiwanis Avenue for a special event on July 30th, 2021. Item 40, special one-day liquor license for KJTLLC to be operated at the Social, 301 South Thompson Avenue for an outdoor event on July 30th, 2021. Item 41, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat Incorporated to be operated at Landscape Garden Center, 7201 South Minnesota Avenue for a wedding reception on July 31st, 2021. Item 42, special one-day liquor license for T-Slat to be operated at Maverick Air Center, 4201 Maverick Place for a special event on August 5th, 2021. Item 43, special one-day malt beverage license for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at 8th and Railroad Center Parking Lot, 4001 East A Street for special events on August 6th and September 3, 2021. Item 44, special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine licenses for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at the River Greenway from 6th Street to south of 8th Street, including Raven Industries Riverfront and Parking Lot located at 205 East 6th Street to include the prairie area between Phase 1 River Greenway and the Sharapa Place Parking Lot, north to 6th Street and south to Sharapa Place for River Fest on August 21st, 2021. And item 45, special one-day liquor license for Pave LLC to be operated at 8th and Railroad Center Parking Lot, 401 East A Street for a special event on August 28th, 2021.
Good evening, Jamie. Full boat tonight.
Yeah. Good evening, Jamie Palmworth Licensing. I am here to answer any questions that you have on items 30 through 45 and also ask for an amendment to item 38 to fix the glaring typo that I made on this agenda. July 10th date should not be on this agenda.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to any of these items here?
Make a motion to approve items 30 through 45.
Second.
I'll make a motion to amend item 38 by striking quote 10 and leaving only the date of July 31st, 2021.
Second.
All right. Motion a second on that amendment. We'll go ahead and vote on that amendment first here, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. So, to the main motion as amended, any discussion here, counsel? All right. Hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Move on to our next item.
Item 46, second reading and ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, providing supplemental appropriations to fund the Link Triage Center, building improvements and operating support from state grant proceeds, $800,000 sponsors the mayor.
Good evening, Alicia.
Good evening, City Council. Alicia Colura, Health Department. The funds that I'm going to be reviewing with you quickly are being received from the state of South Dakota. The funds were appropriated by the state to the city of Sioux Falls to support behavioral health and mental health services in crisis stabilization, which is being provided through the Link Triage Center in partnership between the city, the county, Sanford Health, and Avera Health. This supplement through second reading will appropriate grant proceeds of $300,000 for operations through the Health Department and $500,000 for additional remodeling and security cameras through our centralized facilities.
Thanks, Alicia. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions for Alicia on item 46? Move approval. All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Counselor Kylie on this. Any discussion there? All right. Hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Star?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. I just want to also thank Senator Blake Kurt. He was our prime sponsor for us on that bill in the legislature and helped to secure that funding. So, thank you to Senator Kurt for that work. Next item.
The next item was moved by amendment item 56, a resolution finding approximately 35 parking stalls along Levitt Shell East located in Falls Park West and four parking stalls along the west edge of Kiwanis Park do constitute a park purpose. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Don.
Good evening, Mayor. City Council members, Don Kearney with Parks and Rec. The next, this item and the next two are all interrelated to the Steel District redevelopment as well as the Downtown River Greenway Phase 3. As part of this presentation, Dustin and I will cover all three items, and I'll take the, the one on park purpose and, and the gifting agreement, and then Dustin will cover the easements for this development. This exhibit shows the various different parking stalls that all or a portion of the parking stalls are on Parks and Rec property as proposed. The, on the top of the exhibit, it shows four parking stalls on Kiwanis Park property. In the bottom left portion of the exhibit, it shows 19 parking stalls. In the last area, in the center bottom of the, of the exhibit shows an additional 16 parking stalls to get to the total of 39 parking stalls. The way these parking stalls have been planned certainly will create a mutually beneficial parking spaces that will not only serve the Steel District development but also Falls Park West and Kiwanis Park. In addition, as you know, we're currently working on the design of the Jenkins Plaza, and with that project, we'll have an all-inclusive playground and an ice ribbon that we believe are going to be very popular and well-attended. These stalls will be conveniently located to serve this new development along with Levitt Shell. The Parks and Recreation Board did review this park purpose item at their June board meeting and did recommend unanimous, through a unanimous vote, your recommendation for approval. On the next item, as it relates to the gifting agreement with CR Lloyd and Associates, Lloyd Property would be gifting the land that you see there shaded in green. This is the land that we need to be able to develop the Downtown River Greenway, which butts up to Kiwanis Park, which really call for the extent of, of Phase 3 of the River Greenway. Lloyd Companies will acquire seven and a half acres from Sioux Steel and then turn around and gift us 1.12 acres that we need, again, to build the Greenway, which is identified in the green shading on that exhibit. The closing of the land will occur within 70 days after Lloyd closes on the property. And in addition to being able to build the River Greenway, we have very limited access to Kiwanis Park as, as it currently sits through a primitive easement, so to speak. And to be able to get good trail access along there like we have on the east side of the river will be tremendous for this development of the River Greenway and just be a great pedestrian corridor for our city. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Dustin to talk through the various easements.
Dustin Powers, Planning and Development Services. So, the last item, as Don discussed, is for this project are the easements that the city would be granting to allow improvements to occur that would promote the access to the development, future Greenway improvements, as well as add parking to the area that would be open to the public. So, here on the screen, we show the six separate easements that'll promote the connectivity and access to the development. Within the easement areas, improvements will be constructed to promote, again, access for the public as well as emergency access and parking for the area. To go through each of the individual ordinances fairly quickly, the first arrow there shows easement A, which wraps around the north and west side of the Steel District property. In this area, a roadway, public parking stalls, and a fire hydrant would be constructed. Easement B would be the extension of 4th Street across Phillips Avenue, across Falls Park West and into the development. Easement C is just south of the 4th Street area and would be for the construction of the public parking stalls that Don previously addressed. Easement D would provide access from 6th Street going north and south into the development. Currently, there is an access easement there that's only for really single-lane traffic. This would really just widen the easement to promote the additional density that would be provided by the project. Easement F would be over in Kiwanis Park and, again, would allow the construction of the roadway and access to the park as well as the parking stalls that would be constructed there. And then easement G is related to a fire hydrant that would need to be constructed to, again, promote the fire safety of the area and the This following map illustrates the emergency access through and around the site that the proposed development requires. As you can see, many of the easement areas that we just went through and just shared support that emergency access that's needed to support the development. Public access to the future Greenway improvements, again, is currently limited, and by looking and approving these easements, we do see mutual benefit to not only the development but the public's access to the city's assets and development of those future improvements for Phase 3 of the River Greenway. So, when we look at all of the easements, all of the easements are very similar in language except for the improvements that are occurring that we already went through. So, all of the improvements would be constructed and maintained by Lloyd. The easement property and those improvements must be maintained in a good and usable condition and allow the public's ingress and egress into the sites and, and the access to those improvements. The Parks and Recreation Department is required to sign off on all improvements that occur within the easement areas. And then all of the easements are tied together, and the easements aren't, wouldn't be entered into unless the gifting agreement that was previously approved was also entered into, and that they would also be required to complete the improvements that are addressed in the easements. And if those improvements weren't completed, then the easements would revert back to the city as well. So, as with the other two items that Don previous presented, the Parks Board did review the attached easements and did recommend approval to be brought forward to City Council for consideration. So, with that, again, there's three separate items on your agenda. The first is the resolution for the park purpose related to the parking stalls. Item 47 is the ordinance approving the easements I just presented, and then item 57 is the resolution approving the gifting agreement from CR Lloyd Associates to the city. So, with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions now or as the items come up on the agenda.
All right. Thank you, Dustin. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to item 56 tonight? All right. Counselors, do you have any questions on this item? Go ahead, Counselor Nitzer.
Anywhere where there, I think this was referenced at first reading, but anywhere there would be parking stalls, would there be meters? Would it be managed by the public parking system, and would they be public spots?
A requirement of the, or the easements is that those are open to the public. There is the ability to meter them. Ultimately, we'll have to figure out if, what we would like to do, it could be time zone parking, or it could be meters in the future, and then how that works out on enforcement still needs to be determined. But ultimately, the, the easement that would be granted would require them to be open to the public no matter what.
So, however they're programmed, they're open to the public?
Yep.
And then this is just related to the project in general. Do we know the timeline of when we need to start construction on the, on the third phase of the River Greenway to tie with their construction optimally?
Yeah. So, currently, construction of the project, you know, would, for the Steel District, you know, grading and stuff would be happening within the next month as long as everything comes through approval. They would be starting on the parking structure and residential structure first, and then the office tower kind of in that same time period. Ultimately, that would all be started this fall with the hotel starting either late this winter or early next spring. In terms of the start date for the Greenway improvements, we still need to work through design. That was some of the funding that the council approved earlier this year, was to get us through design this year. And then there's about a year's worth of permitting that we need to work through with the Corps of Engineers. Ultimately, the goal would be to start the construction of the Greenway in the winter of 2022 and completed by the winter of 2023 is ult, kind of the goal right now. The development would be being completed, the different phases of the development would be completed in the 2023 timeframe and then into possibly early spring of 2024. So, we would be constructing at the same period in which they would be constructing as well.
Yeah. The reason I ask is because as, as you indicated, we need to design and we then need to fund it, however we're going to fund it, and, and start construction. So, we have to identify all that within a year or so, I suppose. The only other thing is the low-head dam piece, can that be done at any time regardless of this project, or is that, do we know? Is that dependent on this? Is that, that project going to be in the way? I assume not, but, because you could do them together, you could do them separate.
Yeah. I think ideally from economies of scale, bidding, you know, environment, certainly our intention is to bid it as all-as-one project.
Try to get in once and out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. If we're going to be in the river putting in coffer dams and things like that, we'd like to do that once versus twice.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks, Don. Other questions for any city staff tonight on this item? All right. Look for a motion here.
Move to approve.
Kylie?
Second.
Sale?
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Counselor Sales. Are discussion here tonight, counsel? Counselor Brecky, go ahead.
I have a question for the city attorney. You know, actually a series of questions. I had asked last week about, you know, whether this was actually park property and whether it was the opinion of the city attorney's office that these were actually parks. Had the city taken the proper prerequisite action to actually make them parks? And I asked for that advice and was told that, you know, that the city attorney's office would get back to us on that. So, there's been some discussion between your office and me since then, and there's a, a kind of an ongoing debate. I would advise the public and the council about whether or not the information that the city attorney's office has prepared can be discussed publicly. And I asked that the information be allowed to be discussed publicly because it was information that I asked for publicly. It was part of the public discussion, and I asked the city attorney's office to not market attorney-client privilege. I was advised that I couldn't ask them not to do that and that they intended to send it out to the full council with that stamp on it. And then I was advised that, that if I got participation from the full council to waive it, that, that as a council, we could waive the attorney-client privilege. I couldn't do it individually. And then, just most recently, and I did talk to my fellow council members and tell them that I was going to ask them to do that, that they would go ahead and waive that privilege so we could discuss and ask those questions about that opinion. But just minutes before coming up here for the meeting, the city attorney has most recently advised me that now that I cannot do that, that as a body, that we're not even allowed to waive this privilege. And so, I don't want to put my, my fellow council members in an uncomfortable position because I had talked to them about this and thought that we did have the ability to do that, and then just minutes before the meeting, found out that's the opinion of the city attorney's office that we do not. So, I would ask the city attorney before we go into discussion on this, you know, what is the basis for that opinion? And what is, you know, under, you know, how does it meet this criteria that it is that we're not allowed to talk about whether or not it's the opinion of the city attorney's that these are actually parks?
Thank you, Counselor Brecky. I do appreciate the discussion. I did send it out attorney-client privilege because I am giving legal advice in, in that opinion to all of you on the status of these parks. And we had talked about whether or not the city council as a body could waive the privilege. I hadn't thoroughly researched it until later this afternoon after my meetings, and I took a look at it. And the council has adopted certain ethics ordinances that are found in chapter 35, and beginning at chapter 35050 is what applies to the conduct of city council members, okay? So, there's a definition that the city council has adopted for confidential information, and that is privileged statements or communications, whether expressed or implied, oral or written, between the city council and their attorney. And so, that's the definition adopted. There's a longer definition, but that's relevant for tonight's discussion, okay? And so, then I went and looked further, and there are certain standards of conduct that this body adopted. And, and under 35054, it's called Standards of Conduct for City Council Members. It says, "City officials shall not take action to disclose confidential information." And that would include attorney-client documents that we discussed with you. What I had earlier misspoke on was that there is an exception under subsection C of that ordinance that says that a majority vote of the body could disclose information that they received in executive session by a majority vote of the body, okay? But that's different than what I sent out today because we did not go into exec session on this. And so, by the plain language of the ordinance, that's my advice to you, is that I have to advise you that we read ordinances based on their plain language, and that's what it says. And so, that's the basis of the conversation that I had with you. But I also had relayed to you also that if there is a court opinion that you want to ask about, I can disclose that here and talk to you about that. So, we can certainly do that. I just can't disclose my impressions or advice I gave to the council earlier in my opinion that I sent out earlier today.
I, I appreciate your explanation. The question I have is whose privilege is it? I've always been under the impression that it's the client's privilege. And so, if the client wants to waive that privilege, and again, in the, especially in a public situation during a public debate, that they have the right to do that. And I don't think that the ethics ordinances had, you know, ever intended to, you know, supersede that authority of the council to do that.
Well, based on the ethics ordinances, I think there can be a violation brought on your standard of conduct because of how the city council defined confidential information and what standards are holding the council to. So, that's my best advice to you is that I understand you're dissatisfied with the ordinances, but I think that they would have to be amended to, to help satisfy what you're trying to get to. But at this point, I can only advise you as to what these ethics ordinances say and that they include the attorney-client privilege.
Okay. That, you know, I think that satisfies me for tonight's discussion. I do have several questions about, and I, and I will, you know, I will announce, I guess, that I did not read the opinion that you gave because I'm, I'm, I want, I didn't want it to be privileged, and I don't want to have my questions cut off because I'm referring to the opinion itself. So, I've not read it, but the questions that I have is that, as I understand it, there are two South Dakota State Supreme Court cases that are relevant and on point with regard to the concept of implied parks and are relevant to this discussion. So, I would just ask you, could you explain, again, for the benefit of the public and the council, those cases and what they say?
Absolutely. Thank you, Counselor Brecky. I can tell you that the South Dakota Supreme Court has said that when we have a park, it has to be dedicated by the governing body or by actions of the governing body, okay? And so, the court has come out and has said, you know, using it for park purposes doesn't necessarily make it a park, but the South Dakota Supreme Court says that you should have a dedication, and it's devoting the property to a public use by an unequivocal act of the owner of the property and acceptance of that dedication by the public. South Dakota also recognizes two ways to dedicate property. One is by express dedication, and the other is by implied or common law dedication. Express dedication occurs when you see it in a deed, or I, I use the example of Helen McKinnon. McKinnon Park was given to us in a deed, and Helen said, "I want that to stay forever as, for park purposes." So, that's your express way. Another way to do it expressly is by is when the intent has to be gathered by the acts of the governing body, how we hold the land out to a park, whatnot. And so, I had given you previous information on the deeds, and the deeds do not have a restriction in them. I could not find a resolution by the governing body, and so, we're looking here at implication. And so, you would have to be looking at the acts of the governing body holding it out as a park. We currently have the Lovett Shell in Falls Park West. We're going to have Jacobson Plaza in there. You can look at that all, both Kiwanis Park and Falls Park West are governed by no alcohol in the parks. They also have closing and opening hours in the parks. You can look at whether or not the public has accepted those. Those are all factors that you will determine as a governing body whether or not an implied dedication has occurred.
Okay, and this is the part I don't know whether you're comfortable or not. You'll just have to advise me, but are, so is it the opinion of the city attorney's office that, that the current properties that we're about to make a decision on are, would meet the criteria of an implied park for purposes of those two Supreme Court opinions?
That is a determination this governing body should make tonight. When you have an implied dedication, it's up to the courts because the courts held out, the South Dakota Supreme Court said as a test that there is no, what amounts to dedication by implication depends upon the facts of the particular case, and no hard and fast rule can be laid down as a guide for the courts. So, I can just tell you that these are factors, and this is just a decision the governing body should make.
Thank you. Thank you for your assistance on this matter.
Absolutely.
What I would say now as part of the discussion phase of this motion is that I don't see, I didn't last week, and I don't see this week in light of the city attorney's advice that there is any problem with these, the fact that these are parks. But for the future, because there is kind of an open question about, you know, whether or not these, because they were city property and there wasn't any actual action taken, that perhaps in the future, to make sure that we don't have any kind of taint on the title here, instead of relying on our opinion that they're implied parks, we should probably follow up, you know, with a quick ordinance, perhaps listing these properties as well as, you know, other city parks that we may look up and, you know, discover there's really been no official action taking on those ones that are city lands. So, I would just think in the future, you might see coming from the city council, and I would be glad to lead it, you know, just a simple ordinance that listed the parks that, that in our opinion are implied parks, and make sure that they have that official designation and make sure that there's not any problems in the future. But I don't see any reason whatsoever, so I will be for, you know, because it's actually, if it's not a park, it benefits the situation. So, I will be voting for this, but I think it does require, you know, based on the information that we're receiving from the city attorney's office, some follow-up information, some follow-up action by the city council.
All right, thank you, councilor. Other discussion on this item, council? All right, seeing no further discussion, let's take a vote on this motion to approve this item then, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move to item 47, which was moved by amendment.
Item 47, second reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving permanent easements. Sponsor is the mayor.
You just say ditto.
Ditto, same presentation. Any questions we can answer, we'd be happy to.
All right, thanks, Dustin. All right, so this is the motion for the permanent easements. First, would ask if there's anybody from the public here to speak on this. Councilors, any questions for the city staff on this item? All right, look for a motion.
Ditto my earlier motion.
All right, perfect.
Second, Erickson.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Erickson to approve item 47. Discussion on this item, council. Councilor Breckie, go ahead.
Ditto my previous discussion.
There you go. All right, other discussion, councilors? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote on item 47, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero, and item 57 moved by amendment.
Item 57, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a conditional gift agreement for donation of real property with C.R. Lloyd Associates Incorporated. Sponsor is the mayor.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on 57 tonight? Council, any questions on this item?
Move to approve. Kylie?
Second, sale.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale to approve 57. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, let's vote on this item, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. We'll move to item 48, please.
Item 48, second reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, declaring certain property of the city of Sioux Falls surplus and approving gratuitous transfer of real property by gift agreement. Sponsor is the mayor.
Evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. This is the second reading of our Veterans Community Project of Sioux Falls. Just quickly, this is the one point, excuse me, eight, four acres just north of the Axteau Park School, just east of Western Avenue. We're looking, our Veterans Community Project is looking at constructing one of their villages for home, for our homeless veterans, consists of roughly 22 individual homes and then eight of the family homes and one community center. Just some of the quick components of the gifting agreement that we went through is they need to commence construction within two years of conveyance. They need to complete 15 tiny homes and a community center within three years of the conveyance, and also maintain that status as a 501(c)(3) organization. Be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Move to approve. Kylie?
Second, sale.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale to approve 57. Any discussion here? All right, hearing none, let's vote on this item, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That item passes seven to zero. Item 49.
Item 49, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located 6509 South Cliff Avenue from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the O Office District number 14412-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3, 2021. Private applicant, 77th Street Partners LLC, Richard Nazir.
The applicant here is Rich Nazir. The owner is Spirit of Peace Church. It's located west of South Cliff Avenue and north of East 73rd Street. The size of this is .06 acres in that southwest corner of the church property. The purpose of this is the owners of that office lot to the south are, need a little bit more property to construct an office building on the property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Council, any questions for Jason here? Councilor Starr?
Yeah, just quickly, the number of people, when I looked at the Planning Commission recommends, it just seems like the number gets lower and lower. I don't know, was it summer, is it conflicts? But they're all three to zero when there's, what, nine people on that board?
Yep, good question. It is a little odd this month. We do have one planning commissioner that actually just had a baby, so she will be out for a little while. One other planning commissioner couldn't be there. Really, what it comes down to is we have a lot of items on the consent agenda, and if one of the items on the consent agenda you can't vote on, you have to recuse yourself, then, so we have three different planning commissioners on one item on the consent agenda that to recuse themselves, so, thank you.
Other questions for Jason here? All right, look for a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3.
Move to approve.
Second, sale.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Sale to set a date of second reading. Any discussion there? All right, we'll vote on that, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item 50.
Item 50, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located 4501 East 57th Street from the C3 Commercial Community District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number 14541-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3, 2021. Private applicant, Common Land, II LLC, Brian Solberg.
The applicant here is Brian Solberg. The owner is Greystone Commercial Holdings LLC. It's located at the southwest corner of East 57th Street and South Sycamore Avenue. It's about .15 acres in size. This is also similar request to the one we just had. They just needed a little bit of additional property, so they're zoning that to C2 to add with this existing lot and construct a strip center on there.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Council questions for Jason here tonight? Move approval?
Second, sale.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Sale to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3. Any discussion, council? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Item 51, please.
Item 51, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located northeast of West 60th Street North and North Career Avenue from the C4 Commercial Regional District to the I1 Light Industrial and I2 Heavy Industrial Districts, number 14566-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3, 2021. Private applicant, Enclave Construction LLC, Carrie Franklin.
The applicant here is Enclave Construction. The owner is Beverly Griffith Trust. It's located west of I-29 and north of West 60th Street North. It's about 56.8 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing some retail uses adjacent to 60th Street, and then some light industrial to the north of that, and then some heavy industrial uses to the north of that.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Council, any questions here? All right.
Move to set those second reading for Tuesday, August 3.
Second, Kylie?
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to set a second reading for Tuesday, August 3. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 52.
Item 52, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at the southwest corner of East 6th Street and North Wildcat Drive from the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 14573-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3, 2021. Private applicant, Mystic Heights LLC, Preston Mettler.
The applicant and owner here is Preston Mettler. It's located north of East Arrowhead Parkway and east of North Veterans Parkway. It's about 2.95 acres in size. The purpose of the rezoning is the applicant's looking at constructing a strip of twin homes on that property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item?
Set a second reading for Tuesday, August 3.
Second, Kylie?
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to set a second reading. Any discussion there?
Set a second reading for Tuesday, August 3. [inaudible]
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 53, please. Item 53, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 735 South Glendale Avenue for the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 14576-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3, 2021. Private applicant, Southeastern Development Foundation, Lynn Keller Forbes.
The applicant here is Seacog. The owner is Janel Songstead. It's located at 735 South Glendale Avenue. It's about .11 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is Seacog's looking at moving a house that they received from Sanford on this lot, and it's less than 50 feet wide.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item here?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to set a second reading for Tuesday, August 3. Any discussion on that, council? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Item 54.
Item 54, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 735 South Glendale Avenue for the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 14576-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero. Recommendation set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3, 2021. Private applicant, Southeastern Development Foundation, Lynn Keller Forbes.
The applicant here is Seacog. The owner is Janel Songstead. It's located at 735 South Glendale Avenue. It's about .11 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to develop a future office in multifamily development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item tonight? Councilors, do you have any questions on this item here?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Counselor Nitzer, I believe that was, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3. Any discussion on that, council? All right, let's take a vote, then, please.
Council members, Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Item 54, please.
Item 54, first reading, in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rezoning property located at 735 South Glendale Avenue for the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 14576-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval three to zero.
for the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District to the RT1 Single Family Residential Traditional District, number 14576-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval of three to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. Private applicant, Southeastern Development Foundation, Lynn Keller Forbes.
The applicant here is Seacog. The owner is Janel Songstead. It's located at 735 South Glendale Avenue. It's about .11 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is Seacog's looking at moving a house that they received from Sanford on this lot, and it's less than 50 feet wide.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item here? Counsel, questions for Mr. Bieber here?
Set a second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to set a second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That one passes seven to zero. Item 54.
Item 54, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located southeast of West 69th Street and South Tallgrass Avenue from the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District to the LW Livework District, number 14587-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval of three to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. Private applicant, Creston Capital Holdings, Erica Mulally.
The applicant here is Creston Capital Holdings. The owner is the University of Northwestern out of St. Paul. It's located at the southeast corner of South Tallgrass Avenue and West 69th Street. It's about 10.64 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking to develop a future office and multifamily development.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, do you have any questions on this item here?
Move approval?
Second.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Counsel Nitzer, I believe that was, to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd. Any discussion on that, counsel? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item 55, please.
Item 55, first reading in ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located north of East 61st Street and west of South Sycamore Avenue from the RD2 Town Home Residential Suburban District and the RE3 Apartment Residential High Density District to the RA2 Apartment Residential Moderate Density District, number 14598-2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Planning Commission recommends approval of three to zero. Recommendation, set a date of second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd, 2021. Private applicant, Creston Capital Holdings, Kelly Greer.
The applicant for this one is also Creston Capital Holdings. The owner is RMB and Associates. It's located west of South Sycamore Avenue and north of East 61st Street. It's about one acre in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the applicant is looking at constructing two four-unit, three-story townhomes on the property.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this topic tonight? Counsel, any questions here?
Set the second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie to set a second reading for Tuesday, August 3rd. Any discussion there? All right, hearing none, let's take a vote, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item 58.
Item 58, a resolution establishing the Sioux Falls City Council's budgetary priorities. Sponsors, Council members Sale and Jensen.
Counsel Sale, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The resolution you see before you is a culmination of a lot of work that the council has done over the past few months. We've been reached out to by several organizations, and some of them I will go through. This is just based on the fact that there have been federal monies coming to the city, and we've done quite well. And so the council has decided to put together a resolution that gives out some of their priorities at this time. I'm just going to read you the therefore be it resolved that city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, that the city council supports the following budget and capital programs based on funding availability, project needs, and project timelines. The 24/7 urgent care, the Butterfly House and Aquarium, the Call to Freedom, Marissa's House, a Helpline Center for new facility needs, Mary Jo Arboretum, Public Safety Home Buying Program, the Seniors Disabled Municipal Property Tax Refund, the Skateboard at Nelson Park, Tomar Park Outdoor Tennis Facility, the USD Discovery District, the Washington Pavilion Parapet, the YMCA Community Youth Center. This list is not all-inclusive of the things I'm sure we're going to support through the budget process, but I felt it was important to let these entities know that we've listened to them, we hear them, we've expressed our desires to the administration, the finance, the development people, and that's where we're at. And I'd be glad to take any questions.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this item tonight? Good evening.
Good evening, council members. Michelle Trent, I'm the executive director at the Compass Center, and I want to take this opportunity to just thank you for letting me speak here this evening. I had a meeting earlier with the mayor to talk about some concerning pieces that are affecting victim service providers across the state of South Dakota due to some federal funding cuts. So, the, most of the victim service providers in the state of South Dakota receive funding through VOCA, which is the Victims of Crime Act. We did receive word, as I was driving here tonight, that it was approved by the Senate in, today, 100 to 0. But what has happened is there was federal legislation issues that created a decreasing fund in VOCA. So every service provider that receives VOCA in the state of South Dakota received a funding reduction from their request earlier this year. The Compass Center found out about our reduction in our request on July 1st, and that reduction in our funding significantly impacts our services. And so we are looking at there potentially being a need to look at reallocating services or looking at lowering services if we don't meet the budgetary needs. We had about $230,000 from our request cut from our VOCA funding. And so I certainly support all of these items up here. I think it's wonderful that we have such a giving community and such a giving council, and I love the pieces that you have identified here. I would urge you to think about also the victim service providers. That certainly includes the Compass Center, but also includes Children's Inn, Call to Freedom, other agencies throughout the community that provide victim service work. And certainly we'll be having conversations with you all as well in the near future about how the city can help with some of those budget shortfalls that are created by that federal funding lapse. So I'm certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have and would love to have further conversation with those of you that have questions about that. But certainly want to just note that and let you know that that's something that will be a need for victim service providers and for victims in our communities, because if our services aren't available, we know that people access other services, that they hurt longer. We've had reports of suicide and suicide attempts when we're not able to work with the folks that are on our waiting list. And so this is certainly something that's very concerning for the city of Sioux Falls, but also then the state of South Dakota. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
Yeah.
We'll call you up if there's questions. Any other public input tonight on this item? All right, let's get a motion on the floor, and we can move into discussion then.
Move approval?
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Sale, seconded by Brecky to approve item 58. Now we'll move into any discussion. Counsel Nitzer, go ahead.
Two things. First of all, as it relates to this particular resolution, conceptually, I'm behind all of them, but of course the devil's in the details of some of them. And it's going to be contingent upon agreements and certain things being structured, some of which are more complicated than others. As it relates to the input that we just heard from Michelle, I would point out that the Compass Center is a vital partner of the city, so is the Children's Inn. And one of the things that we really should be looking to do with the money, I mean, these things are wonderful, but with the money that we're receiving, it should be targeting needs that were exacerbated by COVID and things like, unfortunately, domestic abuse, sexual assault, those sorts of things were affected. And so that would be a perfect fit to figure out how we could fill in some, a gap like that. And so I would be highly supportive of figuring out how we can help out those providers that provide critical services to our citizens and to our city.
All right, thank you, Counsel. Other discussion on item 58 here? All right, hearing none then, let's take a vote on the motion to approve this.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Yes, go ahead.
I think it's just a typo, but it should be Mary Jo Wagner Arboretum. So if I could, I'd move to amend by adding Wagner. W E G N E R.
Second, Brecky.
All right, so we got a motion to amend this item to add Wagner, W E G N E R, to the arb, before Arboretum. In a second, let's take a vote on that, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We're back to the main motion now, as amended. Any other final discussion here? All right, now let's take a vote then.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. We'll move to item 59.
Item 59, a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards. Sponsors the mayor, those being Bobby Andura, David Bengasser, Greg LaFallette, Gene McGowan, and Mae Meyer Henry, all to the Public Parking Advisory Board.
All right, anyone from the public would like to speak to that item? All right, let's get a motion, please.
Move to approve, Erickson.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Erickson, seconded by Kylie. Is there a discussion on this, counsel?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Erickson, go ahead.
I had asked the question as we were, I talked to Director Pritchett a while back and just confirmed earlier about the Parking Advisory Board. As you know, we made some changes to allow other folks to serve outside of the downtown district to ensure that the board's full. I don't live downtown or work downtown, but I frequent downtown quite often. And so making sure that it's represent, representation of our community when we all supported that. And so there is one person that does have an office downtown, but I'm not sure he uses it anymore because I know he's really more or less retired. And then there was one other person that is not in the downtown district. And so I think that's important to note because we just made those changes. So I'm excited for this particular board because we've kind of talked about them a lot and making sure that they are meeting and things are run through them. And so for me personally, I'm excited for them to vet some of these projects that are changing downtown when it comes to the parking and see what that looks like in the future. So that's all. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other discussion here on item 59? All right, let's take a vote then, please.
Council members Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Sale?
Yes.
Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that one passes seven to zero. Item 60.
Item 60, notice of transfer of appropriations on the memorandum dated July 13th, 2021.
Counsel, any new business to discuss tonight? All right, seeing none there, we'll move to public input. As a reminder, input during this portion will last no more than three minutes per person. And during general public input, the public is welcome to speak on topics that we didn't cover earlier in the evening. So at this time, we'd like to invite anyone forward. First come, first served. Good evening.
Greetings. I'm David Tokitis, and I'm here to talk to us all about parking on Phillips Avenue downtown. But first, we'll introduce a little bit about roads and their design. Normally, the road is, a single lane of a road is maybe nine, 15 feet wide. Interstates are wider than city lanes usually, 12 feet for an interstate. One thing about narrower roads is they tend to slow vehicle traffic. But in terms of a city, the bigger reduction in traffic flow is often the red lights. They can really slow people down. Now, the issue working out here tonight is the diagonal parking on Phillips Avenue. We get more parking, but there's a little of a space for the traffic, and slower traffic, of course, is good for pedestrians. But some of the pickup trucks that park along Phillips Avenue, they kind of stick out into the driving lane. So I went down there with a tape measure and took some measurements. Typically, the driving lane is still 10 feet wide, but I did find a spot where the driving lane was only eight feet, three inches wide. Too narrow, not safe. And I took some photographs. That's Phillips Avenue. Here's a couple of pickup trucks that are sticking up in traffic. The one that's closer, maybe not too bad, but the one in the distance, more of a problem. So I got a little closer to that truck in the distance, and you can see that the parking spot is not quite normal. It's got a little angle to it. It's a little shorter. And there's a photograph of that weird corner spot. You can see why it's a little shorter and might lend a big pickup truck to stick out on the other end. So I've got some recommendations. We can take that shorter parking stall and make it longer or maybe put up a sign that says no long vehicles in this spot. And overall, we might, at least we should consider making a little more space for those long trucks and maybe make the diagonal parking spaces one foot longer. Don't want to make them too long because then the sidewalk is less narrow, I mean, more narrow. And of course, you know, you got to have a landscape. Here's the Big Sioux River shrinking. And we should try to enjoy nature and art just because it makes people happy. And there's somebody who's obviously very happy being an artist. So, good evening, everybody.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input? Come on up. Good evening.
...in his court. I'm here about a number of items.
Can you say your name, sir?
Oz is the first name, last name Angel. First of all, I think three minutes is too diminutive to discuss some of the things that most people would like to discuss pertaining to the city. But I'm here particularly about three things. First thing being transportation. It's appalling. Housing is the next one, and insurance is the other. Let's start first with transportation. I'm confident that everyone sitting on the council has a car. However, there's some of us that are using public transportation to get from point A to point B. And my understanding is that everyone is saying how great it is. Well, it isn't because I am a litmus to authenticate that it is not. And something has to be done because it cannot continue this way. And if any of you really want to have the experience of knowing what is going on in the public transportation space, you'll all leave your cars home for a week and use the public transportation. The second item is housing. There needs to be some form of rent control. What has happened since I moved here at the beginning of March is to attempt to evict me, even though I paid my rent six months in advance, because the owner wanted to sell the house, and I was an impedence to the sale because I refused to sign the new lease of the new owner. So he attempted to evict me and dislodge me and refund me the difference on my rent. That shouldn't be able to happen. He then embarrassingly put a posting on my front door saying that within three days I had to leave, and then I had to seek solicitor counsel in order to have him back off. So something needs to be done there. Insurance, I'm paying $1,190 a month because there are only two options. There needs to be significantly more options in order to give a better rate range for people that are looking to self-insure. Aveira and Sanford is the only two options in a state that is emerging with new residents. While people moving here is just not okay, and $1,190, of course, is ridiculous. And I'm confident that none of you here on the council are paying $1,190 a month. Another important point is the internet system. We have only basically one midco that is monopolizing and is asking an inordinate amount of money in order for the services to be procured. And then when the services are procured, the performance is nothing short of disastrous. Something has to be done. And I believe that US council members need to really attempt to relate to people that are not necessarily sitting in your respective positions, but to understand the people that are on the ground and having to deal with these things on a daily basis. I know you can't get it all done today, but I'm going to work in earnest to make sure that at least some of these items, particularly transportation and housing, is addressed. That's it. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Sierra Bruce, Sioux Falls. Man, did he say a mouthful. I've been saying this since 2014. He hasn't reached on crime. And where does he come from, Florida? Because I just told him we're back 20 years. He just came here in March. And when he stepped foot in here, there was all these problems. I said, you should have came in 2014 when there was drugs on the corner selling dope and crack cocaine at 2:00 in the afternoon like a Doron and McDonald house. And pimps was on city buses trying to recruit children in high school. So he was, he's going to come back next, next month about petitions. He wanted to do a petition driving against councils. Some council members removed after their seats because he said councils not listen to the public. I'm not going to personally get involved in it, but people coming from all these states, Christine, I'm getting people here, right? And y'all hearing it. I'm from Louisiana. I lived in Wisconsin. When I stepped foot in here, talk about a culture shock. Talk about 20 years behind time. Now, go to peer, join legislation session. My godly Jesus, we might as well open up the book of the law of the land of the Bible and say that this is the Bible, and we're going to go according to the Bible. It's absolutely bizarre. So next legislation, we're going to be working on revising laws, on pimping and prostitution and all of that, of prostitution probation, to get it out of the law. But we're a growing city. We're still struggling to be back behind times here, back behind times, back behind times here. Let's keep building like Mayor Yuta would do, build rooftops and buildings. That's what Mayor Yuta did, right? We have to be for everybody. This guy here just came from Florida and recognized the issues. Are y'all going to say he's crazy like y'all been telling me for years I'm crazy? Because some of y'all's council members think I was crazy too when I first came up here. Like, what the hell was she doing up here? We had to cheap tell, tell council members that I was literally insane. Seriously? Y'all need to go to other cities, y'all this size, in other cities, just like the accreditation for the police department that needs to come up. I'm waiting on them to get in the office because on Friday I'm going to hit them up with it. They do this in other cities. We're behind times with that accreditation program. We're behind times because we got to get those K-9 officers. We need to be eight to 10. Our sistering state of Des Moines, Iowa, has eight of them. K-9 officers are telling me, Sierra, can you please help in the budget? Not the ones that are retiring, but we need new, new K-9 officers. Then upper management told me when we get staffed, because we're down 22 to 25 officers, we will make sure that we get our K-9 officers. Should I be talking and about the police here and having to open up my mouth because the police can't come here and open up their mouths yourselves? No, absolutely not. Welcome to South Dakota.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak tonight? All right, hearing none, look for a motion to adjourn us out, please.
Move to adjourn.
Second, Brecky.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Brecky. All those in favor, say yes?
Yes.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Have a good night, everyone.